Social unrest and injustice, help us deal with that, Lord, and to come together as one people and one country and one state and one county to do the good work that you want us to do. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
All right, everybody's got a copy of our agenda for the work session? We have to approve the agenda.
I mean, we adopt the, excuse me, adopt the agendas presented.
Press, and we have a second. Ms. Miller, hold your favor.
Aye.
All right, Dr. Lees. All right. First item on the work session agenda is a school update. We have Ambrose Elementary School, and we have Dr. Mary Vickers here with us virtually tonight to tell us what's going on at Ambrose Elementary School.
Just let me know if I'm not clear, and I'll try to be better. First of all, I just wanted to thank y'all for the opportunity to be here to share some of Ambrose's spotlight. Our theme this year, Chan, the second slide, we're kindness rocks. That is, was a theme that was easily chosen this year. We all wanted to show that we were just wanting to be kind and everyone get back together. So, we do have throughout the school bulletin boards and a lot of activities that round, you know, going around the kindness thing. And if you'll see, we have a rock garden, and we invite anyone that wants to put a rock in our garden, and some of them have something about kindness. As you can see, there was one there with a mask. Just anything that a child wanted to do, they did this at home, and they're doing it at school during the STEM lab time, so we're just excited to see that rock garden fill up. The next slide to show, actually, our number's at 398, but that's 371 in person and 27 was virtuals as of last week. And our population is 33% white, 34% Hispanic, 11 black, and two other. So, we're still, you know, it seems like our enrollment is down from the last couple of years, but, you know, we expected that. The next one is our COVID challenge slide. As you know, throughout all the schools, we've been given the hand sanitizing machines, our little dispensers. In our lunchroom, if you'll see the one with the table there, we have numbers on our seats, and they, we spaced out where they stand to get their plates, so we've done as much as we can in the lunchroom, trying to make sure there's space and distance. The other slides just show, one of them is a teacher. She has actually a partition built that has the plexiglass, and so that she can still have small group. The other one shows just how they've spaced their desks apart as much as they can, taking out all the extra furniture that was in there in the last couple of years. And then the bottom is just one of our wonderful community sponsors who has donated thousands of dollars of equipment, in equipment, not the dollars, but actually has purchased. I mean, we have been super blessed and so thankful that they have been able to bring and buy supplies for us. Is that computer little store right there on the corner where you see the guy holding the sign? That's who has been super sponsor, giving us a lot of equipment and a lot of supplies. The next page is just some of our little superstars. We do have a site work club, an ABC club, the little pre-K and kindergarten first, they get to join in and just share some of their accomplishments, and it's just, you know, it's like old school. We just still have some of those things in place, and the kids are so eager to share their little, you know, awards. Our next one is our STEM lab. Our STEM lab is a lot of creativity. We do have a classified person in there. I wish we could afford a certified and get a teacher with, you know, art and, you know, some of this other knowledge of doing some more, you know, with the actual robotics or engineers or something, but they do a wonderful job, letting them do a lot of exploration and a lot of creative. And that was just one day I went in there, and they were really working hard on their creative skills. So, our STEM lab is up and rolling, it goes every day, so the kids really like going in there. The next page is our Eagle, Camp Eagle. We, a couple of years back, we decided that we really needed, you know, we have title money and state money to spend on extra things and have, you know, resources and a lot of supplies, and we decided that the team just kept, every time we'd meet, they said, "We just need somebody, we need people who can help tutor, and we just need other things." So, that's what we used our title money for, for the after-school. It's just like, kind of like after-school when we do it in the spring, but this particular group of kids are not necessarily our low, low kids. These are kids that's just right there in the middle, that just need a little pushing, you know, they just need a little bit more. And with this COVID, you know, being out six months, that really has been a helpful program that we've put in place. Okay? The next one, this is our highlight. You know, this is when we think of, you know, every time I said, "Okay, y'all, what do y'all want us to highlight? What do y'all want us to tell the board?" And they said, "Y'all need to share the cultivation station." And with that grant that we received last year through Mansada, we have been able to build that little cultivation building with the classroom on the outside. You'll see there, the little kids out there, there's tables and they can sit. This is actually a group of our high school kids that came out and gave some demonstrations, and there's the kids there listening. That's some of our produce there on the table that we actually gathered this about three weeks ago. Some of the bell peppers, and we had lettuce, we had greens, we just had a lot of little, and we, you know, it's not a lot, but it's the kids that, when they go out there, you know, it doesn't matter if it's one tomato or two tomatoes, they think they, you know, they're excited that they see some actual vegetables growing. And then that's just some of the beds on the other side. The next page is when we did our cultivation station farm day last year. It actually was right before COVID hit, and this is our highlight of the day where we get to have all the community, different farmers come into our area. We had the cottonseed, we had blueberries. You'll see there, we had the honeybee man, we had the premium peanuts. We even had Hillbrook's pride with the chickens, and that was a big thing, with the kids getting to see the chickens. And then at the top, you'll see the hen, the chicken layers, and that was the tape man from Snopesville or Hazelhurst area. But they, we had just a lot of good vendors that day, and had some cows, and we had pigs there. Just the kids were just excited to see all the activities that we had. And then we also had our nutrition department partner with us, and we're able to get this foreign lady to come, and that was the highlight of the day. They all got to get an ear of corn and a roasted ear of corn, and it was wonderful. The last slide, oh, I'm sorry, another slide. This is where, this year, actually, about three weeks ago, we had Mr. Highsmith from the high school came out, and they helped us plant some trees that was donated by Farm Bureau. We've actually gotten trees since then, purchased with some of that grant money. We've gotten several, I think it was up to eight now, we've got trees, and they planted, and those kids, I mean, I told Mr. Highsmith, they do a wonderful job working with the younger kids, showing them the plant parts, and just really talking about and questioning them, and just, you know, I was really pleased. I was actually out there that day when they were doing that, watching and listening, and it was a really, we have a lot to be proud of in Coffee County, those students do a good job. And then the, okay, I'm not, on my page, it's not sho, okay, there it comes. I was gonna say, my video's not showing, is it showing on y'all's?
I think it will. Play live, please.
Is it coming up, Chan?
Yes, ma'am, we'll try, you ready to restart?
Well, I'll just tell real quick, this was, the farm, the young farmers, Coffee County Young Farmers from through Farm Bureau, they brought a drone out and showed them how they use that farming, how the farmers, you know, have access to a lot more, you know, technology now. And he actually taped this to show our day that day, so it's really a repeat, he kind of just keeps driving, I mean, flying over and over, but it just lets you see, we actually had a classroom at each station and how they were involved in activities. And then that actually is going to conclude, so when that video is over, if y'all have any questions, I'll answer your questions, but this is very short, but I'll let you play Okay, well, Dr. Lees, I appreciate the opportunity, and y'all have a great evening.
Well, thank you, Mary, that was wonderful.
Thank you, Ms. Vickers.
Okay.
All right. The next item on the agenda is the minutes from last month's meeting. Are there any questions, changes? If there's no concerns, then we'll place those on the consent agenda for approval at the monthly meeting following this meeting. Financial reports. We have our monthly financial report. Ms. Yawn is here to give details on those reports as needed. You'll see there are several documents that we would ask the board to review and fund approval, we'll place on the consent agenda. Ms. Yawn, do you want to describe the documents that we have here?
Yes, sir. The first document is our financial report as of October 31st, 2020, and you can see that we began the fiscal year in July with a beginning fund balance of $19,349,718.10. At the end of October 31st, the month fund equity, we have $16,813,203.82.
Next document is the monthly financial comparison.
This report here shows our FY21 comparison to the past three years, fiscal years. And again, you can see our fund equity at $16,813,203.82, a difference of last month of about $500,000.
Next document is the financial detail.
This report reflects our revenues and expenditures in the different areas. The first section is our revenues. And if you come to the second page, you can see our total revenues as of October is $12,075,833.40. The second section reflects our expenditures by functional area, and the total expenditures as of October is $14,612,317.68. And the last document, again, reflects our fund equity where we are at the end of this month. This shows our total revenues as of October here, $573,667.92 compared to the other months. It's about, you know, we're right in there with G, except for September, and that's when we had that Department of Revenue discovered their competition era. That was, that all school systems was able, you know, had that era.
I did notice that $573 is the second highest month we've had, so with all the chicken sandwiches being sold next door, hopefully next month will be higher.
How long did that, how long did this calculation, or what do you call it, how long had that been going on, since 2015?
It was since 2015.
So, since then, all of those, every month should've been a little higher than what they have?
Yeah, the first month that was reflected was in May, but then they gave it all back to us in that month, December.
Yeah, I'm just saying that, you know, it looks like we're way ahead of where we've been, but in reality, some of those other months back since 2015 should've been a little higher. So, you can't really get a correlation between necessarily where we are now and where we were, but we don't know what it was.
If there's no questions, concerns, we'll place the financials on the consent agenda to be approved, the monthly financial. The next item is the East Plough schedule. This is something that we have to advertise each year. We have to run in the local news media, and this document reflects our 2013 splosts and Any questions about that document? We're just about, I was gonna say, we just about finished out the 13 splosts, the only thing we like is the last payment on the form in our session.
Yeah, a quick question, I'll leave, just on the estimated costs, where we've got the lineups, but those are just estimates, that's not something that we're required to spend against or required to spend over, it's just an estimate of what we've plugged into the project.
Exactly.
We can change those or I can.
All right, if there's no questions, then we will advertise this in the local media. The next item on the agenda is the Coffee County School System Strategic Plan. We wanted to review further activities with the board with strategic planning and activities that have been going on in the school system in these two focus areas, and both of the focus areas deal with people and culture, and I've got the two teams here tonight, and our first team will deal with cultural competency, and that comes from focus area three in our strategic plan. You know, we have our strategic plan, and it's broken down into different focus areas. Focus area three is people and culture, and we have Dr. Christina Tucker and Ms. Allison Fate here to tell us about what's been going on.
Thank you, Dr. Lees. Good afternoon, everybody, good evening. As Dr. Lees stated, we are here this afternoon to provide some updates as to how we have been addressing cultural competency with professional learning. The next slide. Just a reminder of who our team members are, Dr. Christina Tucker, myself, Mr. Van Allen from Coffee High, Mr. Grady Hart, Assistant Principal at Coffee Middle School, Ms. Tina Sapp, Principal at Broxton, and Ms. Hillary Taft, a teacher at Coffee High School. And again, we are here to share about our professional learning opportunities and what we are doing to strengthen cultural competency. We have our FY21 implementation plan that we have shared out with our schools and with our central office leadership team. We've completed our first two sessions. Session one was back in October, and it was an introduction to implicit bias, and our staff was charged with watching the peanut butter and jelly video that focused around identifying what implicit biases are. Session two, we've decided as a team that we wanted to exemplify our passion and concern with the content and the information that we were sharing, so we felt that it was necessary that our team start including introductory videos so that everybody would have a clear understanding of what we were aiming for. So, their task was to read introduction pages about unconscious bias, and again, it was to set a tone for the additional sessions that are to come up. Each year, we are required to do some Safe School modules. Dr. Tucker has shared some of the information about that with our staff, but we felt that there were a couple of them that were very pertinent to what we are going to, that our focus is for cultural competency. So, diversity awareness with staff to staff, and diversity awareness, diversity awareness with staff to student, those are going to be two modules that every person in the Coffee County School System is going to complete between the end of this month and January the 4th. Our upcoming sessions are, again, will start back again in January. Ms. Tina Sapp and Ms. Hillary Taft will do our introductory video, and that one will focus on personal narratives, and then they will have a follow-up activity to do on unconscious bias. The fourth session will be in February, Dr. Tucker and myself will do our introductory video, and that session, we are going to have all staff to complete an implicit bias test, and then we'll share a copy of some information on what you do with that information once you kind of recognize what your implicit biases may be. And our last session will be in March, and all of our team members will come together and kind of just do a thank you video to appreciate everyone for being willing to, you know, look within themselves and see what we can do to improve as educators in our school system and what we can do to impact our school system for the better and for our children. Their task will be to watch very short videos, one called High Heels Violent and a Warning, Why We're Awkward, Snacks and Punishment, and Check Our Biases to Reg our Biases. So, we're going to have those sessions coming up as the year progresses.
Good afternoon. The next slide just shows you, we've created in Google Drive a folder that is being shared out with school-level administration, and the title of the drive is Cultural Competency. Within that drive are folders. We color-coded the folders just to kind of keep the admins eye on the folder that needs to be done. Right now, they're at session two, and then that just shows you some additional supports that are within that particular drive folder. The next slide. We wanted to share with you the November the 6th task. This is what the admin saw when they opened the folder. There's a supplementary support item along with a video, and Chan's gonna, or no, I'm sorry, is gonna share that video at this time.
I'm Van Allen, Assistant Principal of Coffee High School.
My name is Grady Hart, Assistant Principal of Coffee Middle School, 7th grade.
And we're here today to talk about our cultural competency session two. You ready to talk about this session two?
Yes, I am.
All right, okay. Hold your breath, it's gonna get personal.
It's gonna get personal.
But that's okay.
Yeah.
That's okay. But first of all, we're talking today about unconscious biases. We all have unconscious biases, and it's not something that we do deliberately. It's something that is part of our belief systems, how we were raised, the result of our social conditioning, our life experiences, our attitudes, things of that nature. It's people who are different from us and their cultural and how we react to them are. So, have you had any experiences with this unconscious bias?
Yes, I have. It probably started, you know, seven years ago. I'll tell a joke real quick. I bought my wife this jury box, and I didn't have any jury in it, so after that, she told me, "Well, you gotta fill it up."
That's right.
So, moving forward, seven years now I've been going to this jury store, and the owner knew me pretty good. Every time I go into the jury store, they always want to purchase something for my wife. They just, we had that kind of connection, you know what I mean? So, this one day in particular, back when I was coaching football, I didn't have her haircut, rapid practice, I kind of smelled bad, had shorts and t-shirt on, kind of had some holes in it.
That's right.
I talked to the owner, told her I was gonna come up to the store, purchase something for my wife, and she said, "Oh, come on over." So, on this particular day, there was a sale going on, so I walked into the store, and immediately, everybody just stopped what they were doing and started looking at me, you know? And I happened to be the only African-American male in the store at the time, so I kind of didn't say anything, kind of just, just kind of stayed to myself and make sure I ain't, make anybody feel, you know, uncomfortable. But shortly after that, you know, the owner came out, and she said, "Hey, Coach Hart, how you doing?" And when she kind of approached me, that way, everybody kind of felt that ease, you know, during that time. And I purchased, I think it was a necklace for my wife, but that was a kind of unconscious bias that I received, just buying something just clearly for my wife, just, but the thing about it is, I think that, you know, everybody is raised differently. As you mentioned earlier, there is a condition that everybody has when growing up from parents or grandparents, and I think that them not knowing that they was being biased towards me, you know, unconsciously, so that's the kind of experience that I received from them.
How did that, how did that make you feel?
Kind of made me feel upset at first, you know what I mean? But, you know, I know that it's going on, you know, it goes on in today's world, so I wasn't, you know, that upset about it, but I recognized it, and ultimately, at the end, you know, when I left the store, I think some people recognized as well, once the owner came out and talked to me and everything about some of that, so.
That's good. I'll tell you an example that I had of personal experiences. I was dealing with a young African-American male at the high school, and Dr. Cummins was there, we were both talking to him, and I noticed as I was speaking to this young man, he was looking down at the floor, and the way I was raised was always, you look a man in the eye when he's talking to you, and it's disrespectful not to. So, I was like, you know, "You need to look me in the eye when I'm talking to you." And then after the meeting, when we were talking, Dr. Cummins got with me, and he said, "Listen," he said, "I know you don't know this, but in African-American culture, it's disrespectful to look somebody in the eye." He said, "We were always taught, if somebody in authority was talking to me, you better look down," because as he said, you know, his daddy would say, "Boy, you eyeballing me?" You know, and that kind of stuff. So, that was an unconscious bias that I had, that I had no clue about. And so, that's part of it, it's how we were raised, and the key to it is to know it, to know we all have it, and recognize it when we do it. And then, and also try to recognize how it makes the other person feel in that. So, because all this young man was trying to do was try to do the right thing, the way he was raised. I tried to do the right thing the way I was raised, but both of them didn't work together. So, just what we want our folks to do is to read over pages one, two, one through three in this unconscious bias section. Recognize their unconscious bias, and let's move forward to deal with it. So, you want to wrap us up?
Yeah, just like you said, just recognizing that unconscious bias, but also to start those conversations. You know, sometimes it may be uncomfortable, just like, you know, it was probably a little comfortable for both of us at first, but after talking about it, you know, we got a great sense on both sides of how that happened. I think once we talk about it, we can move forward and be successful.
That's right. We're all in this together.
That's it.
All right.
We wanted to take the time to share what the teachers and the admin are going to see in each of those activities, and there'll be five of those throughout the year. The last slide shows you kind of our next steps. We are compiling teacher read-aloud resources to share. We have about 30 of these at this point, and these are read-aloud titles by a variety of authors, and they're also being read by the author or either somebody from the same cultural background that the author represents. The three titles that The three titles that you see on the right are investigating, we're investigating professional learning resources and those are three texts that currently our team is reviewing to see which of the three we would like to move forward with to provide, to begin to provide the schools with professional development resources as we move forward. Any questions?
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate the work y'all are doing and, you know, we've talked about it, this, this really gets at anti-racism and ensuring that as we talk about equity and excellence, that we're really doing the work. So thank you, ladies. The next item on the agenda is student support systems, dealing with support systems that address discipline and, and the whole child in our schools. So we have Dr. James Banks here tonight to present to us.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to say to our board members, our superintendent and everyone here tonight, my task is not hard. The three-person team that I have is myself, Dr. Dana Bickers and Ms. Aubrey Rosenoff. They weren't able to come tonight, so I told them I'd go forth and do the best that I can as one-leg to the three-leg team. So we're going to give you what we have. My theme really is totality of discipline from a twenty years perspective. Talk about then, now, and tomorrow. And I brought that up because I came here in two thousand and one. That was a year that I'll never forget. I started out as an assistant principal at Satilla Elementary. Tony, I remember you doing it. Everybody that we had at Satilla. But what I'll say to that is, when I came here, within two months, we had to experience one of the greatest tragedies in the history of our nation with nine-one-one. And I can remember going around the flagpole and praying for those that lost loved ones in New York City. Very serious time in the culture of our world. But to make a long story short about then, the way we did discipline back then is not anywhere comparable to what, what some of the things that we do now with the resources that we have. I can go back to the paper disciplinary referrals where the teacher had to write everything with a pen and you give a resolution to what they wrote and when you saw the student. It was a triplicate copy. We kept a copy for the school. Student took a copy home and they had to sign it and bring it back the next day. Boy, we have evolved since that time. And when I look at some of the things in our community pertaining to discipline that I have seen within the last twenty years, at the last board meeting, I was not able to be here, but the next morning, that Friday morning, we met with some people from our community. I reported with one of those persons, Ms. Suggs and Ms. Brockington, Dr. DeLees, Chief L. Rodd and myself. And one of the things that we talked about, we talked about the problems in our community and I said, if you want to see the problems in your community, I said at that time, come with me to juvenile court.
All right.
And you will see some of the things that's going on in your community. So one of the things I had an opportunity to do on yesterday, from nine o'clock till about twelve-thirty, is go sit into our juvenile court session with Judge Ross. And here are some of the problems that we have from some of the students at that particular court here in yesterday. Criminal trespass, carrying a weapon to school, possession of illegal contraband. We had battery violence within the family, battery against a school official, terroristic threats and attacks, acts disrupting public schools, simple battery, theft by taking, burglary second degree, entering and out of. We had driving while unlicensed, hit and run, too fast for conditions, not, not using a safety belt, well, no, not wearing your seatbelts. And we also had sexual battery and once again, theft by taking. Last student had a situation with child molestation. Okay? Not to add all those things, to make a summary, we also have situations pertaining to drugs in our community. Vaping, marijuana, smartphone abuse, taking pictures and publicizing across the country. These are the things that populate our community. Question is, what do we, what do we do about it? How do we address it? How do we make it different? How do we transform some things that we used to do in what we need to do now? Okay? When I look at discipline, I had to look at an acronym and I said, D I D. We look at disruption, insubordination, disrespect. It's been going on for a long time. How do we address those things to make it better for our students and not only our students, for our teachers? Okay? So we need to transform the way we do some things, okay? I told you about the old way with paper forms, we went to infinite campus. Now it's just a touch of sin and it goes right to the administrator, he addresses the problem and we move forward. And another thing with normalizing our community, we go by a student handbook. There used to be a time when individual schools would buy their own handbooks. Now we do it up here for the totality of learning for our total system. What a way that we have evolved. Not only that, with parents, they can get on the parent portal and they can look up their kid's grades right on the scene. We always try to tell, as a principal, I always try to have encourage teachers, put grades in there at least once a week so parents can see what's going on. And then we have a process where we talk about RTI, Response to Intervention, MTSS, all those good things we do to satisfy the school environment by keeping discipline at a minimal level. Okay? Moving forward, as we progress into this, go to the next slide, please. Focus area number three, as Dr. DeLees has indicated with people and culture. Here we have, as far as our team, we want to employ strategies that focus on the development of the whole child and we have strategies one through four. Not part of the child, but the whole child. And I thought, I humorized about that kid that saw the baby on the road. He said, we have a whole white baby. So we're looking at the whole child, not just part of the child. Go to the next slide, please. As far as strategy one, we say implement student support systems to enhance the development of the whole child, counseling, student attendance, engagement, and anti-bullying. With discipline, we want effective discipline. We have it planned for better schools. As I said, we have a student handbook as our guide to how we operate from the beginning of school until the end. All right? Those things that we used to do. We look at tradition. All traditions are not bad, okay? We look at the change in our culture and society. What can our children handle and what can they not handle? Okay? We're living in some serious times in the history of our world right now. And I say, there's some things that we have to do to have balance. One of the things that has changed the world is social media. From two thousand and ten onward, there has been a new paradigm shift of technology that can bring balance or it will bring imbalance. Technology, we need to use it for the benefit of learning to help our students proceed from one level to the next, which goes back to our mission, destination, graduation for college, career, and life. Okay? What I will say, some things that we must do with consistency, when it comes to discipline, we want consistency. We want what you do for one, you do for all. And I think we keep that, I guess, in a consistent realm. Normally, when there's a very pressing issue at level three or level four, normally our principals, they're going to call and talk to me or one of us up here to make the best decision so that we stay consistent with what we do, with what we say we're going to do that's publicized in our handbook. And part of our vision is an equitable, equitable and excellent education for every student. And if there's no balance, you increase the likelihood of things going astray. We have to remain consistent, that will, that will be minimized and we refuse to let anybody fail. All right? What juvenile court told me yesterday is that we have some students that are not balanced. And the question is, what are we going to do as a team to get them to that balance that they need in their lives? And one time I came in here and I heard it say, a school to prison pipeline. I was against that because it's home, school, and if we don't make it at home or school, then it's prison. It's not just a school to prison pipeline. It starts at home. And I believe that's very important for us to recognize. Okay? Strategy number two. Let's go to strategy number two so I can get out of your way. It says, continue to implement, continue to implement, continue to implement. One of the greatest paradigm shifts that we have as a game changer in our district pertaining to discipline happened in the two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen school year when we had all eight elementary schools and Coffey Middle School go towards being PBIS schools, PBIS schools, Positive Behavior Intervention Support. We had nine schools in two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen that went to the initiative of PBIS. We added the Alternative School and George Washington Carver in seventeen eighteen and then we added Coffey High School and the Career Academy in eighteen nineteen. At this moment right now, we have twelve of our schools and the alternative schools that's PBIS schools. And we're doing some phenomenal things to keep order and to keep balance so that we can minimize disciplinary problems and maximize learning for all students. Another thing that we've added a couple of years ago, we have there is AID modules. Okay? AID modules is an online video social training module program that we give to students to work on modules at the school in lieu of out-of-school suspension or putting them in ISSP. Okay? We feel that if we can do that to help them get some training on what their problems may be, we can keep them at school so learning can be continued for that particular student. Also, with PBIS Tier Two, we have check-in, we have check-out. When that kid gets to school that day, whomever his leader is, a teacher, a counselor, or administrator, they check in and talk about the goals, they go over the goals for the day and then at the end of the day, look at the outcome, how successful were you at what we said you were going to do for that particular day? So as you can see, we're doing some phenomenal things for students in our area. Contracted services, we have about four contracted different agencies that help students with their problems. Core Three, Unison, Southern Counseling, and we also have South Central Primary Care. Those are the four agencies that we have to help out with some of the problems that we have. And as I said before, some of the problems that kids had and experienced in two thousand and one, when we're talking, talking about taking medicine now, is no comparison to what we used to see years ago up to now. And I, I'll go on because of my time this year, but go to the next slide, please. I want to just say something about strategy three, pertaining to safety. We have safety plans, we update those every year for every school, our safety measures. The question asked around our culture now in our world is how safe are our schools? I want to say Coffey County schools are very safe. If you remember about two years ago, we had, we have now a school chief of police for our safety department, Brother Chris L. Rodd, doing a phenomenal job with what he does. There came a time when, we always had grade six to twelve SROs, but in the last two years, we've had officers at all elementary schools. And I want to take my hats off to the board members and our superintendent for doing that for security purposes within our school district. Very phenomenal. We have gaggle. And I, I, you guys see it there, but I want to just say something and I want to take my hats off to our system. I want to take my hats off to Dr. Chan New with gaggle. We've really had a lot of heavy situations. Every day, there's probably somebody threatening to kill themselves or threatening to hurt somebody, get into a fight. There's something always contrary to what we need to operate within our school. And I believe with that program, that filtering system, we have saved lives in our district. Now, these kids are hurting right now. I'm very serious about when I say it. They are hurting right now and it's up to us not to fight each other, but to come together in unison to save our children. And I'm very serious about that, but I, I won't say anymore about that section, but I will say my hats off to all of the ones, the leaders and our stakeholders for actually trying to do something out of the ordinary to help our students. And I'll go on to strategy four. Strategy four. Strategy four with our strategic plan. We're in fiscal year twenty-one of our strategic plan, the third year of our strategic plan. Strategy four says, create alternative school placement option for elementary students. And you see me have there, I say behavior. And I say to you, our kids sometimes don't know how to act normal, don't know how to act right. Some of our kids have had traumatic experiences with things happening to them as a little child. When we had the alternative school, we had the alternative school for elementary students. I think the passion is to help students as best we can, but I don't think the, the information was to put five or six or seven-year-olds, eight-year-olds at the alternative school at that age behavioral-wise because traumatic situations call for more help. And I will say to you that we have looked at that, but when I had the learning environment takeaway, when you have twenty-five kids in the class and one kid starts slamming the desk, kicking a teacher, biting the teacher, throwing things, spitting, et cetera, you got to do something to keep the environment going. But I don't think the intention is to try to say we're putting them over there to get rid of the child. We have revamped that process. We have looked at it a little differently and I want to ask the board tonight, we got some feedback from the alternative school personnel and our director, Assistant Attorney Short, they would like, and we would like to see hopefully a name change from alternative school possibly to Coffey Educational Academy. I think that would be a little bit more pleasing or friendly than alternative school. But we still will look at the process of how we send kids over there. We're going to revamp that process just a little bit to make it more nurturing than as punitive. Okay? So I would just say that loosely. Let's go to the next slide, next slide. One of the things I had to learn and you will see there with out-of-school suspension rate, in two thousand and ten, you will see Coffey County had ten point five percent. We were above the state as far as suspending kids from school. We were above the state level. Okay? You will look also again at two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, we were actually above the state in suspending kids from school. Get into a situation as a principal or as an assistant principal, sometimes kids are doing things just so they won't have to come to school. So you have to be cognizant of what's going on in your environment. But by the time we got to two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen, you can see the dip there. We got below the state average with out-of-school suspension. Okay? One thing I look at that as, when we started PBIS, we had a different mindset as to how we started to handle disciplinary problems. Okay? You got two thousand and eighteen, it should have had two thousand and nineteen, but the level has gotten lower because we have changed our approach to how we do when we send students away from school, out-of-school suspension. As I told you about the AID modules, okay? We do that in lieu of out-of-school suspension or in-school suspension. So those things are helping. Go to the next slide. Here with PBIS, major referrals, these are from our eight elementary students, our school, eight elementary schools. You talk about nearly four thousand students. Okay? Two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, there were ninety-seven percent of students who only had zero to one referrals. Two thousand and nineteen, twenty, ninety-eight percent of our student population at the elementary level only had zero to one referral, two percent had two to five, and less than half only had zero to one referral, two percent had two to five, and less than half percent had six referrals or more. Now, if you look at the totality of learning, maximizing learning, minimizing problems, we're doing something phenomenal in our district. We're doing some powerful things in our district. Go to the next slide. Middle school. That N equal to there, it should be one, but whenever we do the information on PBIS, they always had to put West Coffey Middle in there, but it's really CMS Coffey Middle School is one combined school. Uh, you saw eighteen, nineteen, ninety-three percent, ninety-four percent in nineteen-twenty had zero to one referral, the total population of that school. Two to five, seven percent, six percent, six, six, six or more referrals for the year, one percent of the population of over seventeen hundred, nearly eighteen hundred kids. We are doing some great things pertaining to discipline. Okay, let's go to the next slide. Let's look at the high schools, the nine to twelve, nine to twelve graders. Eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, twenty, zero, one referral. Ninety-eight percent, ninety-six percent of our population had no referrals or one referral. Two to five referrals, two percent, four percent. And look at the referrals for six or more referrals, six, six or more referrals, no student had that. And you might ask, well, how is that? Well, some kids, when they get in fights or they have drugs, it just takes one referral because that's a level four. You can't stay in that environment, you have to go to another environment. Okay, so we're doing some good things. And I, I don't think we need to beat ourselves up, let's find the population that's not performing, and let's do something differently. Go to the next slide. Average referrals per day. The green represents last year, the blue represents this year. Now, it's, it's really lower this year, some of that could be attributed to, we have about fifteen hundred students that are virtual. They're not in the building, okay? But you can see at the blue that we are a lot smaller in the number of referrals that we have per day at Coffey High School. Let's go to the middle school. All right, the same thing. In comparison to last year to now, things are slower. I won't say it's necessarily better, but we don't have as many trafficking things that we have to deal with. Go to the next slide, and that's the last slide, I'm gonna get out your way. Coffey County School System, ISS, OSS, and expulsion. Look at that. And that's after, look at sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. After the implementation of the initiative PBIS, look at what is happening, okay? Last thing, all I will say, and I'm gonna sit down, last thing what I will say. The most vulnerable population of students that we have in our district, and it's no surprise, it shouldn't be no surprise, it's not a surprise to me, it's a lot of passion in my heart for that, that, that subgroup, and that's the black males. We got to do something to better those black, we cannot continue the status quo. We got to do differently for that population. And I'm very, uh, biased to that population, I'm very partial to that population, I have two sons of my own. So I will tell you, we got to come together feasibly to do some work for that subgroup. And I don't want that subgroup to get to a part where we can't help them, because we can't help them if we come together. This in Coffey County, this is the most aggressive, best district that I've been in. And that's why God allowed me to stay here the last twenty years. I've been in Glen County, I've been in Jasper County, I've been in Emmanuel County, I've been in Washington County, four counties before I came here, the last twenty years I've been in Coffey County. We are coffee, and we are powerful, and we can do anything we want to as long as we put God first and we work together as a team. Any questions?
I wanted to say this, Dr. Banks, um, you know, when you asked about changing the name over there, I don't think the name is really the problem. Because we can change it to help them, but if we keep sending all our children over there, it's still the same thing.
Well, I, I think, I think this, and I, and I take that data, but I, I will say this semester, we are not sending one elementary child over there this semester. Right now, it might be a little higher, but as of last week, we had only fifteen students total from middle and high school. Uh, and a lot of that starting to get trafficked from the upper level now. Uh, I think some are trying to wake up a little bit and do some of the things that they have at school allowing them to do. But at the same time, we're keeping order, but I think we have to change the mindset.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we got to work, work on first, is just changing the mindset, changing the, the reason why we are sending off. Because, you know, through it all, at the end of the day, you still got roughly ninety-seven percent of black children there. So I'm thinking that's what needs to be changed, is that the way that they are doing it, sending these kids over there without even compromising, trying to talk and see about the whole child instead of the parts of the child, you know, just looking at, you know, simple actions and sending them over there because I've noticed that some children are over there for as simple as cell phones. And it's because of the fact that you're not, you know, some of them are not really just looking at why did they have their cellphone out, you know, and not just sending them over there just because you can get them out your way. You know, so I think that if we work on that last, as you're saying that, work on the difference in doing things and work on, you know, just being consistent with who all, you know, if you let one get by with it, then you can let them all get by with the cellphone. You know, so just being consistent, and I appreciate that, I like that. You know, that's what we got to really work on, that's what it's, you know, not just per se changing the name, just change the way you're doing things. You know, they're sending these kids over there, and particularly those younger children that are going over there. I'm thinking that you're not having no time for these kids and sending six-year-olds over to Alternative Schools. I mean, it's ridiculous. Yeah, but thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Banks.
Thank you, Dr. Banks.
Good information. All right. The next item on the agenda is the TAD District Douglas Square. And, uh, as we've all seen with the Chick-fil-A opening and all the dirt that's being moved around, we got, uh, a lot of progress being made in Coffey County, and it's exciting times. And, uh, we do have a representative here from, uh, Pearlous Neese, Skylar is here. And, uh, we're asking the board to approve tonight in our regular meeting place on the consent agenda, the, the, uh, resolution allowing, uh, the expansion of the TAD. And so we wanted to present that to the board tonight. Uh, of course, Mr. Coddington has been involved with drafting the resolution, and, and, uh, we're asking the board tonight to approve the resolution expanding the TAD for Douglas Square. This would allow a retail development, uh, directly behind the board office to, uh, continue and to, to start. So it's exciting. Did I get that about right, Skylar?
Yeah, absolutely, um, Dr. Lee said, I'm named Skylar along with Pearlous Neese Development, uh, policy here in the last two years. Um, and I'm sure y'all remember the property that the board, uh, sold as part of this development, um, was, the property line that butts the golf course isn't even all the way across, it actually juts back in some about a hundred feet. And so what we're doing is amending the development plan so that if that extra a hundred foot were ever acquired to be part of the tax allocation district, it would be able to be included in the entire shopping center. So it really is about one point six, one point seven acres, uh, directly to the, uh, I guess that would be the west of where the current property line is, kind of in the area where the golf course is, that could be added to the, uh, to the shopping center project overall.
And make it very clear, it's not our property, it really has nothing to do with any of our property. It's just that the Board of Education has to approve the resolution, as well as the city has to prove it, the county has to prove it, the board has to prove it.
That's correct, that's correct. Doesn't have anything to do with actual board property, just, uh, just the incentive to designate the TAD.
Do you foresee any more changes down the road?
Uh, yes, I mean, as far as the TAD itself, no, I don't foresee any more property needing to be added to the TAD, but just the nature of the development, the size is yes, things are always kind of changing around. But I don't foresee it really kind of laying locked with, uh, as far as property, how much more you can add to the development.
Are there any other questions, any candidate on where to pass to?
City passed theirs at their meeting last month, and the county's next meeting is, uh, personally in December, Friday, Monday in December, so that'll be there. And it is, it is important that it gets done this year because of the tax base is certified every year, December thirty-first. And so to try to get everything entered into the tax base in this, this calendar year.
In, in thinking about, I hadn't thought about it in that way, but when the TAD does expire and those properties go back on the tax digest, that will give more taxable property to the school board.
That's correct.
Whenever that goes back onto the tax digest.
That's correct, yeah, and that property is really not, uh, in the digest anyway because it's owned by the border regions right now. Um, so as far as producing property tax, it's not presenting anything right now.
All right. Our plan is, if the board approval, we'll place it on the consent agenda, all right? And you're gonna hang around.
Yep.
To talk with us about property.
Yes, sir.
All right, great. All right, the next item on the agenda is the board meeting dates. We have, uh, the meeting dates for two thousand and twenty-one for board review and approval. Any questions, concerns about the meeting dates? Yeah, I, I, we've looked at it, we weren't sure at the time, but we'd like to do the May sixth. That gives us time to, to have that early board meeting and then approve a tentative budget and then advertise the tentative budget for two weeks and then come back and have a call meeting at the end of, end of, uh, uh, May, is that, that's correct, that's the timeline. In fact, that gives us a, a window to advertise the budget and come back and have a call meeting and have it approved and ready to start the new fiscal year. So that would be May sixth is just what we're asking for to approve. All right. If there's no objections, we'll place the board meeting dates, uh, for approval. All right, the next item is policies. We have a proposal to amend our graduation policy IHF. There was some changes with, uh, special ed programming and the GAA, the Georgia Alternative Assessment. And upon these changes, the State Department of Education is going to award a diploma to those GAA students that's different than the diploma that the, the regular ed students who are not GAA kids. So we wanted to make this very clear in policy so that when those students receive that different diploma, because they've been receiving the same diploma as everybody else, that that'll be, it's in policy, that's, that's the order from the state to do this. And so we wanted to have it in our policy and have it reflected in our policy. Um, the other change in there, we are, we are adding some verbiage about academies. We, uh, have the academies, now they're established. We have the ninth grade, uh, academy, if you will. And then we have, at the high school, we have the four academies that have been established. And then we have the Career Academy over on Wyrras Technical College. And we wanted to formally recognize them in policy. That was in our strategic plan to do that. And then also, we've got in there attendance, beginning with the class of two thousand and twenty-three. A student must be enrolled full-time for a minimum of seven semesters in high school at Coffey High School. This is for Coffey High School students. So the earliest they could graduate would be in December of their senior year, if you had somebody that, that got to that point, and, and put that in policy also, uh, so that students do the full four years in high school with us. But they could leave early, they could leave early in December if they had the credits and upon administrative approval. But seven, seven semesters would, would. Well, they do, but it's not in policy, and we, we, I got this from Camden County High School. Uh, they have that in their policy, and it, the high school really would like to have this. Uh, and we put for, in two thousand and twenty-three, that would be this year's tenth graders. That way, if there's any eleventh graders or twelfth graders that, that were, with the, with the way they were doing dual enrollment, we had kids racking up credits and, and, and trying to graduate extremely early. And this will mean that students will need to be at high school, uh, four years basically to graduate. And this would be for Coffey High School. So this is just on the table for review, this is not for approval tonight. So we would come back next month and ask for approval.
Of course, I mean, I guess, you know, what's, if they get that after their junior year, I don't think, I mean, what is the, what is the problem with it, I guess?
Well, we, we would like them to have the full high school experience and, and to, you know, to be there and, and, you know, uh, be a part of the high school and, and, uh, you know, that's the form of traditional comprehensive Coffey High School. If they want to do something very non-traditional, they could go to the Career Academy, and they can speed their, their programming up there and, and do a, a less traditional program at the Career Academy. But at Coffey High School, they would like them to be there for at least three and a half years, which that would be three and a half years. We don't, but there has been some that have pursued it. We've got a couple of cases right now where counselors have worked with them, and they're, they're working out a plan with some of those students. But we, we really don't want that to become a trend where all of a sudden, because the traditional high school experience is typically four years, um, and that's what we would like to continue at Coffey High School.
And they're coming?
Yes, sir. And, uh...
I mean, I, you know, I, I've had a little bit of experience with that. My, my niece went up in December, she got a dual form school because she went, she was going to a place called Charlotte College. My oldest one could graduate early, but he stuck around to whatever, you know, just to finish out his senior year. I mean, wasn't that, you know, that, that was our chores, but I just don't see, you know, if, if somebody did decide to do it, I don't, I just don't see what... That's what they want to do, I, I guess is what I'm saying, I just don't see what harm it is if we don't have a lot of them doing it. I just don't see what it would make a difference to us as long as they're doing the work. I, I don't know, I'm not...
Yeah, did I hear?
Yeah, go ahead.
With, there's a fair, there's a fair amount of the increase over the last few years. Is that been mainly because folks are taking advantage or, or up until the legislature put a cap on it, on the dual enrollment piece?
Yeah, that's, that's what it was.
I think that thing will kind of solve itself, I mean, I, if there's no urgency, you know, if you can't take those college grads with you, and you're gonna have to, you know, you're gonna get capped out, and what is it now, thirty hours?
Thirty hours. It should, it should solve itself, but we thought that, and there used to be something we called the eight semester rule at a lot of high schools, they had Coffey High School, I think it's in the handbook, it wasn't board policy. But they, they, they subscribed to an eight semester, you had to be there eight semesters to graduate. And that was pretty common in a lot of places. And so this is not eight semesters, this is seven semesters. Uh, and you're right, it could just take care of itself now that the dual enrollment has been capped, we won't see as many students doing it. But we thought while we were working on the grad policy, just go ahead and, and let's make this policy. It, uh...
How many systems are doing it? Just Camden?
I could research, do some more research, but it's, it, I'm not sure I can answer your question exactly, man. That's where I pulled that burden from, from their, their policy. policy.
Well, they didn't make any grants, say anything, you got going on?
Well, if you had, if, that's a good point, Ms. Wilkerson, if you had large numbers of students all of a sudden choosing to get out in three years, we'd have to reduce staff out there, we'd have, we would lose FTE funding ultimately, and, and you would, you know, you would see your high school lose funding and, and, you know.
It'd be that large, it'd lose some teachers, I suppose.
Yeah.
Graduate December is a theme, much less.
Yeah, and I guess the thought is, is if it's policy, and it's like you said, the both, the two scenarios you said would fit under this. Graduate December, their senior would fit under this, or, or, you know, but this would mean they would have to stay there at least through December of their senior year, so. It's just, we just put it in there, we could give it some time, I'm gonna ask for approval with them.
Just a few minutes?
Well, it, it, it creates a scenario where the, I think the administration wouldn't have to be necessarily the bad guy in those cases, and they wouldn't have to be the one that, it would be board policy, and I think it gives the administration some clear guidance on, on those situations and...
Oh, I agree with that. I agree if we're gonna do it, we need it to be in policy so that they don't have to do it. My question is, you know, why did we want to do it, I guess, it's more not, not that we're gonna do it, yeah, let's put it in policy. My question is simply, is it something that even...
I almost, I almost feel better about hearing, hearing from the, the high school and hearing from the, maybe the school government council and, and what the ideas is there on the impact for that cohort of students, I mean, I would like to, and I know, I know we've got some time for this to get done, it's not a...
I guess what I'm, I'm getting at is, and then I'm like I said, I'm, process is I do, but I mean, our job is provide education, quality education, not necessarily determine how long the tuck's gonna get. I mean, I, I don't think it's gonna be a big issue, but if they got it done, then, you know, I just, I don't see where, that's a concern of ours, as long as they did the work and did what they were supposed to do, they got the education, I don't know why we would make them hang around.
Well, you wouldn't be making them hang around, that just means they would have to be there through halfway through their senior year, which is what, ninety-nine percent?
No, that's what I'm saying, I don't, I don't see this, even if you let them, I don't see where this is gonna be a big influence if people do it or not, but anyway, we're talking about...
All right. All right.
You gonna pull that off right now?
Well, that's just gonna sit for...
I know, I know, just laying there, but...
Yeah. Well, we wanted to do the GAA stuff, that piece on the, the...
I mean, can you break it out?
Yeah, the attendance piece, yeah, we'll break that out. And get more information. The next item on the agenda is the system update, board response to concerns, and I spoke with Mr. Lawton, he is, he's gonna present some information tonight to answer some questions and concerns that have been expressed here in the board meeting.
All right, get everything set up here. I wanted to spend some time today trying to address some of the issues that have been brought up, bearing all this participation over the last several months. This is not something that a school board would normally do for various reasons, but I did feel today that we need to take the time to get some information out that will hopefully give everyone a little bit better understanding of where we are as a school system with these issues. The concern that we'll be discussing today, obviously, is the employment of black teachers and staff not matching demographics in our community. It's been brought forward by some of the community members over the last several months that our numbers of black employees do not match our demographics, and along with this concern is the concern that this possibly makes it more difficult for some of our black students to, to learn without seeing faces that, that resemble them and so forth. I hope that some of our two earlier presentations answered a few of the concerns about our commitment to working on these issues, but I also want to take the time today to try to look, you know, through our numbers and get a better handle on what exactly we're dealing with. Before we get into these issues though, and what we're doing as a school system to try to rectify some of this, I do want to take time to try to clarify a few things about what responsibilities we as school board members do have. You know, standing up here tonight, giving a presentation on minority hiring issues and what we're doing in these regards as a school system are not in the normal realm of what school board members normally do. However, I felt because these issues have been presented for several months and public participation, and that they have been presented to the board, I felt like there needed to be at least some sort of recognition or response from the board. As the chairman of it, that would fall on me. I did speak with Dr. Lees about doing this, and he agreed that this was somewhat of a, you know, unique situation, and he didn't really see a real issue with me getting up here and speaking tonight. I will try to be very careful tonight to simply stick to the numbers and what we're doing as a school system, because I do not want to invoke any, any opinions or my takes into this and project those out as, as the board, you know, so I'm gonna be very careful and try to just stick to our numbers. Our school board, or any other school board in the state for that matter, has a very defined scope of duties. These duties include three main responsibilities. First, obviously, is the board sets the policy for the school system. If something in the school system needs to be addressed by the school board, it must be done through policy. When you talk about employment within the school system, our policy is that we're an equal opportunity employer, meaning we do not discriminate on the basis of race, color, religion, sector, national origin, and we expect our staff to follow this policy. Second responsibility is the school board manages the budget. All right, notice I didn't say we set the budget. We have a team of employees from our current school up to our financial department that decides what's needed in the budget to run and affect our school system. The board at this point has the ability to make suggestions and account for any revenue issues before final passes of the yearly budget. So basically, the board has a responsibility to make sure we can manage the budget with the res, revenue resources available, for what we don't do is to try to decide how many second grade teachers are given school needs, that's not what we do. The third responsibility the school board is the one that causes the most trouble, and I would probably say in, in any school system, and that is that we are charged with employing the superintendent. This means very simply that we have the ability to fire and hire this position, but this position often. Once hired, however, the superintendent must be given the autonomy to run the day-to-day operations of the school system without interference, much like any other corporate CEO would. This means that board members are explicitly not to involve themselves in these things. We don't run the day-to-day operations of the Coffey County school system, period. This is where the term micromanaging comes in. If anybody's familiar with our past in Coffey County, you'll know that micromanagement is an ugly word. You know, in our lowest point of our school system, our problems were from micromanagement. And when it comes to the school board and employment practices, I nor, nor any other board member should be involved in the hiring of any position outside of the superintendent. We don't interview candidates, we don't look at applications, and we don't make suggestions for employment. Our only task as a collective board is to vote the superintendent's recommendations up or down, simple as that. That being said, we will get in to what we're gonna look at now, and, and kind of how I want to approach this tonight was kind of twofold. I want to present the numbers. We, we went and tried to dig some numbers up to actually show where we are as a school system with our staffing. I want to prepare those numbers nationally, regionally, locally, and then once we've looked at numbers and done our comparisons, I want to talk a little bit about what we're trying to do to improve these numbers. To get the numbers, I, I had Dr. Lees and some others try to help me put together a slideshow and dig some of this information up, I think it's a better visual for me, maybe give you a better visual of the numbers that we're dealing with. The numbers are, honestly, they're pretty straightforward, you know, but I thought it was important to actually look and see what percentages of white, black, and Hispanic staff that we actually have, and how we compare it up. Once we know that, then we can kind of better understand, I guess, what issues we may be facing. We'll see if I can work this jam. I know, I did that a minute ago, I said I couldn't work, and that's what I was doing wrong. Like I said, well, I didn't spend a lot of time on them, but I did think they were important to try to look at our numbers and see where we actually are. The first few slides are actually student enrollment, you know, that kind of tells you where your demographics are as a school system. These are actually US student enrollment percentages by public schools. Some of these slides don't act, are, are maybe not the current year, some of these slides are a few years behind, but this is, this is the latest data we had. These are actually projected for two thousand and twenty-four, but what you can take from this slide is that your, your white enrollment in public schools has dropped drastically from nineteen eighty-five, your black enrollment has dropped somewhat, not, not nearly to the extent that the white students have, and your Hispanic population has, you know, almost tripled. This is the same information, it's just on slides, you can see a little bit better. The actual percentages, the white population in public school systems in nineteen eighty-five was seventy point four, you know, they've dropped to forty-five, forty-six. Black enrollment was sixteen one point one percent, and it's dropped to fourteen point nine, and Hispanic population has increased, well, it's tripled from nine to nine to twenty-nine to, all right? These are your Coffey County numbers, nineteen ninety-eight, two thousand and eighteen, if you look at those, they pretty well follow the national average. We've lost a pretty substantial amount of white students, we've lost a few black students, and our Hispanic population, just like the national slideshow, have, have increased dramatically. These are the percentages, same information, just shows you the percentage. So what we're looking at here, and this is a slide we want to get to, and we'll talk about our demographics. Our black population in Coffey County school system is at thirty point nine, now thirty-one percent. Hispanic population is almost twenty percent. That, that's real numbers, that's where we're at, that's what our school system looks like. And I just, like I say, we throw out a lot of numbers around sometimes, and I want to dig down and find out, is that, where do we sit? What, what are our numbers? These are them. Staff. Certified staff, teachers, administrators, and support staff. These are our numbers. This is what Coffey County, this is where we sit at, all right? And if you'll look from two thousand and nine to two thousand and twenty, our numbers have, you know, not changed a lot. Our percentage of white employees, certified staff has dropped from eighty-six to eighty-four, our percentage of black employees has remained steady at twelve, and our Hispanic population has increased somewhat, but not drastically, to thirty percent. Those are our numbers. Good, bad, or only, that's what they are. All right, national averages, and again, some of these slides are not completely, I don't, you know, they're not up to date, I don't think your national averages are gonna change drastically, but this is from the US Equal Opportunity Employment Commission and their Department of Office for Civil Rights, the data from the EOC shows that black and Hispanic teachers made up eight and nine percent of all classroom teachers. But in rural areas, which Coffey County is a rural area, black and Hispanic teachers made up only six and five percent of all classroom teachers. So that's where you're sitting on a national level. This is our RISA district, which this map does not show Camden County, Camden is actually in our RISA, and probably a more comparable school to us than some of the others, size-wise. But if you look, it shows Coffey County, the green, the blue at the bottom is your white employees, the green is your black employees, the gray, if I'm reading that, is your Hispanics. Coffey County on the left is, like I say, close to eleven point nine percent, twelve percent. You can see Actonson County there, six point three, Bacon, four point eight, Brantley's a zero. Camden County, that's a more comparable school, but it's somebody more, they're probably a little bigger than us, they've got a military base, but still somewhat more comparable than probably Brantley's. They're eleven point seven, they're pretty much where we're at. Chalkton County, Clench County, Pierce, Ware County, there's another one that's probably more similar to us than some of the others at eleven percent. That's your, that's your regional numbers, that's what people in our RISA, their demographics look like in their certified staffing percentages. This is local, this, this is people that touch us, this is, this is everybody who's in our backyard. Some of these are the same, obviously, Axum, Bacon, you have Bering at three percent. Ben Hill is at thirteen percent, that's the one slide that we see that's actually got a higher certified staffing percentage at Coffey County, and if you look to, the white percentage is actually the same, we have a few more Hispanics than they do, but the minority numbers are actually the exact same, and the white numbers are exact same. Telfair, eleven point five, somewhat similar, Irwin, eight point nine. Well, that's your local ones. Next slide is pretty much a, this is just kind of a, I guess you would say a measure stick, these are some of the schools that we generally compare ourselves to in other areas, so Coffey, Coffewood is an eleven point five, very similar, Lee's six point four, Tiff to nine point seven, Wayne, somewhat comparable, new team in our district, seven point seven. So that's your kind of, the, the schools that we measure ourselves by in other areas, that's what that slide's about. All right, these are the ones that are interesting to me. These, these are, and I think this is when you start digging into, you know, where are you, where are your issues? Where are your issues and why are we where we are? All right, these are your Coffey County school system teacher applicants by demographic subgroup for the last two years. Fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one is the year we're in now, fiscal year two thousand and twenty was last year. All right, in two thousand and twenty, twenty percent of our applicants were black. In two thousand and twenty-one, which is this year, thirty-four percent of our applicants have been black. Okay, so there's a substantial increase between last year and this year. Oh, I went the wrong way again, bear with me. This is a slide I want to come back to later for other reasons. This is actually why they were digging this, that information out. This is another, you could call it a subgroup, this is another place that we have issue with our staff, and this is applicants by gender. You know, I've had people, I've probably had, I don't know how many people I've had call, we've had job interviews at, at different places, and people say, look, especially elementary schools, you got to get a mail out there, you know, and, and we can't necessarily just go hire somebody, the calls are mailed, but this is another group that we have issue with, especially at the elementary school level, this is another group that we've tried to try to, you know, get out there and recruit, try to get these people here, but it's difficult. And this is the applicants by gender, you see the males are at thirty-six percent last year, this year they've fallen to fifteen percent. Not exactly what we're talking about, but I'll come back to that for a different reason later. All right, this is our hiring overview, and this kind of correlates with the slide we had just a minute ago on applicants. Again, going back the last two years, and they've got those two years totaled up on the right. And if you look at that, the total for the last two years, your white hires have been seventy-six percent, your black hires have been seventeen percent, and your Hispanic hires have been six point eight. So we're sitting at twelve, the last two years, we've done a little better, seventeen, our Hispanics, we, we doubled those numbers. But what I wanted to look at is the fiscal year twenty-one, which is the year that we're in, if you look at the number of hires there, our applicants, the number of applicants that we had went from twenty to thirty-four percent, okay? And the number of hires, if you do fiscal year twenty-one right there, you're gonna look, and that percentage is gonna be thirty percent. So the hiring has kind of correlated with the applications, all right? And I think that's, and we'll, we'll get into that later, but I think that's a lot of our problem. This slide, we got this other day for another reason, we put this in there, there was a concern also about, and this slide is just kind of a, I'm not gonna get into trying to, you know, determine what it means, but this is our graduation rate we got last, and this was, this shows that, broken out by subgroups, our black children at the high school had the highest graduation rate of any subgroup, they were eighty-six percent, Hispanics were eighty-four, and whites were at eighty-three. And if you look down from fiscal year eleven, all three of those groups have come a long way, but, but your African-American children have really risen drastically, and I just thought that that kind of went to one point that it had brought up, so we threw that in there. That's pretty much it, I think, on the slides. Here, here's my thing, now that we, we've looked at the data and we've actually seen what our numbers are and where we stand with all this stuff, let me ask you this, because we employ black teachers at, at double the national average, or we have a higher percentage of black teachers than almost everyone around us, does this mean that we should be content with our numbers? No, it does not. It does not, by any stretch of the imagination. And what you heard earlier tonight from some of our staff members who have been tasked with improving these numbers were just a few of the things that that our staff working on and continue to try to move us in a positive direction, including we, listen, we put a great deal of time in the minority recruitment, you know? But this group has been tasked with solving the problem that there is no quick or easy solution. You know, we cannot, as as sometimes has been suggested, simply mandate or tell our staff that they have to hire more black people. We couldn't even more mandate that than we could, than we mandate that they hire more white people. You know, this is against state, federal law, and it would jeopardize our complete, our entire school system, which is not possible. We cannot do that. What we can do is try to identify what our issues are and what issues are keeping these numbers down and try to address them the best we can, okay? And I think what you can kind of see on some of those last few slides from 20 and 21, that some of the things that we're doing are hopefully making a difference and showing a little bit of that. You know, as our as our percentage of black applicants rose, so did the percentage of hires. Now, there's problems with that. Why are applicant numbers this low? I don't have any idea. I'll tell you right now, we but but we cannot, with our applicant numbers low, we cannot realistically get to 31 percent, which is where our demographics are. Black employment, if only 20, if only 20 percent of our applicants are black. We've recruited minority applicants for several years now, and this year, this year, we've seen an improvement, okay? So is it paying off? Or will we see it go back to 20 percent like the slide with the male teacher? That's my concern. Male teachers jumped up a year and then it fell back down. You know, we don't know. We don't know what they're gonna be next year. If it does, if it does fall back to 20 percent, what other things can we do as a school system to try to bring those numbers up? What are the issues, you know, keeping these numbers of applicants down? These are all questions that we'll have to ask to solve this issue. No silver bullet, and it will not be fixed overnight. But the thing that I wanted to get across tonight is that we do have a school system that is working very hard to give every child a quality education while at the same time, we are trying to find ways to make things that are not as ideal as we would like them, like our employment percentages, better. These issues may not correct themselves as fast as some would like, but I know that we will not stop working as a school system to make them better. You know, I just felt like that we needed to kind of get that across tonight, that that we are concerned about these issues. We are working on these issues, and when we leave here tonight, we're not done. We're gonna continue to work on them. It may be a slight, there was a slide that Dr. Banks had that was showed the showed the out of school suspensions. There was a drastic decrease in out of school suspensions from the front of that slide to the last of. But it didn't happen overnight. It's a gradual decrease. Every year we dropped it a little bit, dropped it a little bit, dropped it a little bit. And that's what we're gonna have to do with these percentages. We're gonna have to try and find ways to increase our applicants, hoping that increases your hires, and gradually over a period of time, we get that to where we need to get. But the school system's not gonna continue, are not gonna stop working on it. They're gonna keep working on it. And I just want to make sure, if nothing else, that the community understands it is a concern, and we are gonna work on. Public participation is not 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 a time that we generally have a lot of debate and things like that, talk about stuff like this. But just because we don't do that doesn't mean we're not concerned about it. Doesn't mean we're not gonna work on it. That's all I had on that, but I do have, and Reverend Porter's back here. There was a list of concerns that kind of correlate with some of this, that were given to Dr. Lees in a meeting that he had with Reverend Porter, and I think Mr. Kato as well. I think some of those answers have been over tonight, but just to be clear that we've answered these questions and talked about them, would you, would you have any objection to me reading them and going over what you gave him?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. All right, let me pull these up. These were concerns from Reverend Porter. The first one was that the demographic makeup of the teaching and administrative staff needs to reflect. The SACS requirements was basically saying that we want our percentage of demographics and our teachers to reflect what we have in our schools. We went over a lot of that. We've given you numbers on some of that. We told you what we're trying to do to improve and make us better. The one thing I did not have, I did not have administrative staff in there. I apologize. So I'll throw those out. Our administrative staff, we have 49 administrators, 40 are white, nine are black. So do the math on that, 18 point 25, 2 something, 18 something would be your percentage of administrators. Not where we want to be, but it's it's higher than I guess our the other certified staff. Number two, Reverend Porter, and number four, I'm going along together because it's got the same answer. The questions were number two, to construct and implement policy and procedures for hiring of African American teachers and administrators. And number four was to implement no new programs without African, without African American representation leading the program. The answer to both of those, and it may not may not be the answer we want, but as Coffey County school system, our answer has to be that we're an equal opportunity employer, and we're we're gonna adhere to all federal and state laws, which means that it's unlawful for a school district not to hire, fire, or discriminate discriminate against any individual regarding their compensation, terms, conditions, privileges of employment. But it also says also that employers of applicants, some of the school districts cannot segregate or classify employees or applicants in any way which would deprive or tend to deprive, and that gets into the putting people in certain leadership roles based on skin color. We hope that happens, but we cannot say you got to put this person because of the skin color in a certain position. We just can't do that. It's against federal laws, against state law, and as an equal opportunity employer, we can't do it regardless of what the color of the individual may be. So that kind of is our answer to number two and number four together. Number three, I'm going to not answer that one and defer to Dr. Banks. It is disparities in discipline. I think he'd give a pretty good presentation tonight on all of that, and I hope that what he talked about tonight answered that question, Reverend Porter, on number three. And you don't want me to start talking about discipline, because on discipline, I know until I got home, I don't know if I'm always getting that right. I'm gonna leave that to the expert. Number five kind of gets away a little bit from what we've been talking about tonight, but we'll get it while we're here, and that deals with stipends and extracurricular activities. The question is, what are the guidelines? Is there a matrix detailing how individuals are paid based on experience, age, education, degree, and certification? Stipends, we have two different types of stipends dealing with extracurricular activities. One of them is a is an academic supplement, which is gonna be more or less your student council, yearbook advisor, CTAE, band course, those types of things. There's gonna be a flat rate. That position has a flat rate. It doesn't matter who's in it. That's what you get, okay? That's determined by availability of funds and and things such as that, but it's pretty much a flat rate for that position. The academic supplements, and and we won't get too deep into this one because there's a lot of contention here. I know we've 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 kind of racked our brains on these for years. I don't particularly like the way we do it, but at the same time, I haven't found a suitable replacement to to do it. We've talked about this several, several times. But the way athletic supplements are done is they're based on a certain percentage ranging from 3 to 18 percent on the individual's sport one. And then the percentage is also based on the state salary of the employee, and that's where we get into issues that that I don't necessarily agree with. I'm fine with with different areas paying more because obviously a varsity football coach is gonna involve a lot more man hours than, say, a middle school golf coach. You know, there's a lot of difference in time that you're gonna put into that job. So I'm fine with different percentages on that. What I don't necessarily sometimes like is how we do that state salary schedule. I think it gets into some differences there. It's been done like for a long time. We've tried to find better ways to do it. And, you know, when you start trying to revamp an entire program like this, sometimes you start stepping on your own foot to try to fix something. I'm not a big fan of it, but like I say, as of now, we haven't found anything better. So that's how that works. You may have two individuals doing the same job, and they get paid different things. And it's based on what their teaching salary is. I don't particularly agree with it, but that's how it's done, okay? So hopefully that answers the stipend part of it. So that was the five questions that that Ms. Brockton and Reverend Porter and somebody else.
Lady from Brunette County.
Hi, nice to meet you.
Okay, Ms. Suggs, okay. All right, so those were the questions that Mr. Porter had asked, and and Dr. Lees wanted to make sure we got those answered. I hope that we we answered some of those the best that we can, Reverend Porter. But again, the whole point in this tonight was was simply, even though this is not a normal board board thing that we do, I felt like since all this had been directed at us during public participation, that we needed to be the ones to get up here and try to explain what we're doing. You know, I think that, you know, as a board, we're very limited in in our part of this, what we can and can't do sometimes when we come to employment, because that's not our responsibility or our job duty, I guess would be a better word. But what I do know is we've got a staff, we've got, we've got people working on these things that are very dedicated to making this thing right. And they're working their tails off and kind of like, like Dr. Banks said earlier, you know, what they need is our support. They need our help. They need us to help them get out there and try to find a way. You know, listen, we, you know, I talked to Michaela one day, and I and I told her, I said, listen, I'll be honest with you. I don't agree with these numbers. I don't agree that they're right, but I also don't have a solution. I don't have a snap your fingers answer, you know? And if anybody does, you know, you can fix a lot of problems for everybody. So a lot of these problems are complicated. A lot of them are difficult to put a finger on exactly why they're happening. But I do believe in this school system, we've got the right people that are here to try to figure it out and try to work on it. So maybe that answers some questions, maybe it didn't, but I just felt like we at least need to take the time to try to respond a little bit to what's going on with with this issue. That's about all I've got.
But I do believe that it's just the same as I was telling Dr. Banks. I do believe that if we change our minds, our way of thinking, that things can get better, even the ones that in positions to do these things and all. But if we got so, you know, content in how we were doing things because you had never had no, nobody complaining, even though you know the numbers are low. But if you haven't had anybody complaining about this, then now you're content and consistent with doing things your way.
Oh, I don't disagree with that at all.
And and now it is just time that whoever is in position, that it needs to be, you know, a change of mind.
I don't disagree with that at all, but I do know that maybe not to the extent that we're doing some of these things now, but I do know, and I can only speak for as long as I've been here, but I've been here for eight years. And I know for eight years, we've been trying to work on ways to figure out how to increase our minority population, our teachers' data, you know? And one of the, one of the ones I know that has been a big deal as well has been our Hispanic population. You know, you can sit there realistically, and you could say, you know what, Dr. Banks and and Ms. Miller could do the same job. Doesn't make any difference. But we have specific areas of our school where it would really be beneficial to have a Hispanic teacher that can speak that language, you know? A lot of our, especially in our elementary schools, we've got a lot of kids, they don't speak the language. I don't know if you can speak Spanish, or you can speak Spanish, and I can't. So that is a big problem, but but it's not because we haven't tried. It's that there's, the applicants are not there. That's not a big pool of applicants to be able to hire from, you know? So how do you fix that problem? We've been working on these things, you know, to an extent, maybe not to the extent we are now, but since I've been here, this this has been talked about. We've tried to find ways to do some of that. I know like with some of the minority recruitment stuff, I mean, you know, we've tried to go, you know, start with black colleges and places like that, try to get Coffey County out there. But there comes a point too where, and I'm getting off of, I'm getting off of the board member, I'm getting back, I'm getting it out a lot now, so these may be my opinions. But I think there may be other other things we've got to take a look at, you know? When we start talking about, you know, teachers, are we, you know, why don't we have those numbers? Do we have, you know, and I don't know the answer to this, but are are black children that go off to college and get an educational degree, are they less likely to come back to a rural area as opposed to staying in a bigger city? You know, I don't know. There's there's other things like that that could play into these numbers that I don't have an answer for. I don't know what they are. But that's something, those are the types of things that you've got to have those conversations to look at and try to figure out, you know? Again, going back to the slides that we had, you can't get 31 percent or 20 percent. You've got to have the numbers there to be able to, because listen, I'm, I'm gonna tell you, whether it's white, black, Hispanic, or whatever, if you've got 50 percent of your applicants are certain, that doesn't mean they're all qualified. There's gonna be a certain segment of those that are that are not qualified. So if you're at 50 percent, you may have 40 that's actually qualified for jobs, and then you're talking at 40 percent. You gotta have those numbers. So we've got to, to me, and again, this is me, this is my personal opinions, we've got to figure out how to get the numbers of qualified applicants.
But one thing we got to have when they qualify, that's one thing we got to do. And and another thing is to make our community comfortable with coming back here. But because when you have had so many of them coming here and they've been turned down, so who wants to take a chance and come in here? That's why a lot of them move off, because they're 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 not comfortable.
That's what I'm saying, I don't know.
Because if there's so many of them that are turned down, you know, and they qualify, and they qualify for the jobs.
And see, I know, and see, here's, I don't know that because, like I say, as my as my dues as a board member, I don't have a clue, because I'm not in. I'm not in an interview. I don't look at the applications. I could take, you could tell me they're qualified, and she could tell me they're not. I don't have a clue. I'm, that's not, you know, as a board member, that's not what we do, and I can't make a judgment or determination on on that. Now, that might be something that is.
We've had, on the last meeting, we even had them to to bring out these credentials to listen to them.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Whenever you listen to them and see that there's no difference in the credentials, so that lets you know that these folks are not getting a fair piece at being hired.
I I can't speak on that, that's what I'm saying, because I don't, I don't know. I'm not in there. I can't speak on that. What I do know is, like I say, if we'll try to work together on this deal, we'll try to figure out what our issues are, try to work on, we can make some improvements. And that's pretty much, like I say, that's what I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood, that we were concerned about it, and and we were committed to try to work on it.
Yes.
All right, I appreciate it.
I think we had some question for you.
Well, yeah, well, when we met, the main thing was if we can come to a planning committee as community leaders, and if we can actually be added to when you have different problems or things to occur, if we can as community leaders or church affiliated groups or whatever, if the community can actually have a say so. Because the reason why you don't know is because you don't live where we live. So if we live in this area, we can actually tell you exactly what can help, how you can deal with our children. Because there's a certain way that we act in our own homes that you don't act that same way. Difference between black and white is culture, the way we were raised. You're raised one way, we're raised another way. That's the same difference between Hispanic culture. They're raised speaking Spanish. We're raised speaking Yvonnex. We have to know what our grandparents say when they say wreck it or sit over there, get get back. And they only gonna say it one time. So when we get in the classroom, we, when you say, excuse me, can you please have a seat? We don't know what that mean. We know get your butt over here. So it's just like somebody say, ben aqui. That's his, that's Spanish for come here. Everybody don't have the same language. So we have to understand if we have different types of people sitting at these planning committees. Because when I looked at the strategic plan in the back of the book, I didn't see anybody who lived in the community that I lived in that had majority of the problems. Most people stay in Bay Meadows at this moment or in the country or outside of the city limits. But if you get those people who actually stay inside the city limits, because guess what? Coffey County has one school. Most places have inner city schools, then they have private schools, and they have other schools. So right now, we're talking about inner city issues, and if I'm not mistaken, the crime rate has decreased, but the crime rate in the inner city has increased. But if you're not living in the city limits, you won't know exactly how it can affect you. If you live in the country and there's a burglary inside the city limits, you're not bothered by it because it wasn't at your home. But I might be scared because I heard gunshots on the side of my house. So if you bring people like myself, the NAACP, churches that live on, churches pastors who deal with the situations on every corner, just like the city has done, they set us at a table so that they can understand exactly how to have a solution. So that was my ask when I was in that meeting, and I just wanted to make sure that we understand that that will be a valid solution to this problem. And also, just going to an HBCU school is not gonna help. We have to have certain people to connect and network. We have to have certain people to connect and network, just as if you were to network anywhere else. You know people, it's who you know, not what you know. So if you know people who have been to Clark Atlanta University, they graduated from the school, they can connect you with other people that has degrees or they have things going on. They might have, they might be going with someone who's at Clark Atlanta, who is willing to move to the rural area, and they have a four-year education degree. So it's about who you know, not what you know.
Thanks, Ms. Brock.
Then we got to stop really trying to mock what somebody else is doing. You know, let us be, you know, a trendsetter. Let, let us be the ones that have more blanks. You know, we, we can't, because even that, we don't want to mock the salaries of different, you know, towns, so we need to be trying to make sure that we do better.
Well, that's what I was saying, even though we actually, if you compare us to everybody around us, we are doing better, we're not going to be content with it. We're going to continue to work on it and try, and try to keep improving. That's what I'm saying, that was the whole point of those comparisons, was not to try to make us look good, it was just to simply say, look, we're already ahead of the pack, and we're going to continue to try to move in that direction and get better.
Yeah, I'm just jumping in, haven't been on board as long as I've been. We've got to move past disagreeing about the whys and come together on the hows. That, that was been the discussion from the evening, that's been the comments for the last few months, and we get caught up in disagreeing on the whys. We can do that all day long. That's not going to solve the thing, because everyone's got their idea of why something happened. We may not know all the, all the details, so we, we, we just need to come together on the hows. And I think there's a commitment from everybody up here to do that. No one's disagreeing about that. But we do have to focus on it, we've got to make it a priority, and I think we got to put that on this, quite frankly, on, you know, yes, sir, on your shoulders, not, not as blame, but just say, you know, we, we've learned how to navigate COVID, you know, until there's vaccines here, but with, with the community issues that we've got, and the culture in the schools, and the differences that we've got, that we feel like maybe we can make an impact on, is something we, we can, you know, let, let's put that back up as the priority. And quite frankly, I think a lot of efforts that we've tried to go in that direction really got put on a back burner in March. It really did. I just, you know, so.
Yes, sir. I appreciate that.
And I, now, Ms. Law, I really appreciate you stepping outside and addressing.
Because I think that's all they just wanted to hear, that, you know, they, we are, you know, trying to work on this. That's the thing that they felt like, wasn't nobody paying them no attention, hadn't nobody been addressed in these situations. So.
All right. Oh, we're about out of time. You want to do the next session?
I don't even know if we're going to have time for the next session.
I'm saying, you want to just do the next meeting?
Yeah, we'll just take a recess.
Okay. Well, Reverend Porter, you're on the sheet, I'll come talk to you. Give me just a minute, I'll come speak with you, please.
Hold on, hold on.
Huh?
Hold on, hold on.
We've got about five minutes still.
Can you make it quick? We got, we got to get some journalists talking up, real quick, please.
It's positive. It's all positive. On October twenty-third, two thousand eleven, eleven AM, we had a meeting in the conference room, Dr. Marsh Lees, Mrs. Michaela Rockerton, myself, Dr. James Banks, Ms. Hilda Suggs from the NAACP, and it was a very positive meeting. Dr. Lee was very professional, Dr. Banks was very insightful, and the fact that you responded to our concerns makes me feel a lot better, makes me feel a lot better. So I think we can take this moment and move forward as a team.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Reverend Porter. All right, we'll take, we'll just take a quick break, we'll come and get the next meeting started. So we will adjourn the one session.